Planning Commission, my name is Anna Cassidy and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. The responsibilities of this body are to advise the Mayor and Council and the Planning and Development Services Department on the adoption of long-range plans, policies, specific plans, and regulations that affect land use and development. Will staff call the role, please?
Yes, Chair Cassidy?
Here.
Vice Chair Wellet. Commissioner Zegir.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Pafford.
Here.
Commissioner Young. Conventioner Ortiz Pino.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Wara Rake. Commissioner Lane. Commissioner McCandzy. Commissioner Kenny.
Here.
And Commissioner Lampo. Thank you.
Carver, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do have a forum of seven members. Thank you.
Great, thank you, staff. Agenda item number two is approval of a legal action report for September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve it.
All second.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the legal action report for September thirteenth, say aye.
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 Aye. All those who say nay. That passes unanimously. Agenda item number three is the Food Court United, I'm sorry, I always say united. Food Court Unified Development Code Amendment. Would staff please provide a presentation?
Yes, thank you. So this item is a presentation on the proposed Unified Development Code, or UDC Code Amendment for food courts or food truck courts. Just a little bit of background on why we're here. This is presentation prior to a public hearing. In January of twenty twenty-three, Mayor and Council authorized staff to develop standards relating to the congregation of food trucks on approved sites. In order to develop this draft language, staff reviewed examples from other cities and held several meetings with stakeholders and then developed draft standards to address the issue. When we're developing this, we looked at balancing health and safety and permitting the congregant use in certain areas of the city. And want to be clear on this, that as part of this code amendment, no changes to existing peddler or mobile food truck regulations are proposed. So simply looking at the congregant sites where food trucks will park with infrastructure on site. So a little bit of why we are pursuing this code amendment is, you know, mobile food trucks and peddlers are currently permitted on the site. But we're really seeing ways, changes to ways that food trucks are operating in the city. We've received a couple of requests for these congregant sites where food trucks would park. In order to permit these sites, the code would need to be changed. And we also have concerns about health and safety, really just wanting to ensure that the minimum necessary infrastructure goes in on the sites to prohibit or prevent negative impacts from occurring. I really want to note, too, that the city supports business incubators. We see food trucks as being part of the culture of the city, and we really want to encourage small businesses to operate within Tucson. So in order to develop these regulations, we looked at what was happening elsewhere, how other jurisdictions had addressed this issue. Some of the examples included Portland, Oregon, Durango, Colorado. We looked at Cometa Park in Pima County, which is shown in the image on the slide, as a local example. And then looked at numerous jurisdictions that were in planning literature as well, just to begin to get some ideas of how this was being addressed and look at some consistency across the different types of regulations. So once we developed some draft standards, we conducted a multi-pronged public outreach approach. We held two community engagement meetings via Zoom. We cast a wide net to try to get as much engagement as we could, including sending a mailing announcing the meetings to all licensed food truck operators within the city. We also conducted social media outreach and ended up across the two meetings with approximately sixty-five participants who attended and weighed in. We also met with the Tucson Metro Chamber with their Restaurant Advisory Council and food court operators that were able to provide us some insight as well. So we've received a lot of comments. They kind of ranged, but some of the general comments were concerns about potential financial implications for food truck operators as congregating would require additional infrastructure and therefore additional cost. Some concerns that the proposal might not be aligned with the cost-effective nature of food truck operations, again, with the installation of infrastructure. Concerns about the use of internal combustion generators versus inverter generators. And mitigating the concerns about air quality and noise. There is also feedback received that it's extremely important for many of these food trucks to have stable power supplies when they're running refrigeration, freezers, things like that. There was also feedback received about consistency with existing requirements for restaurants relating to health and safety. The ability to locate a commissary onsite as an accessory use and wanting to be able to do that if the situation warranted. And concerns about liquor licenses and off-site parking and the impacts that these types of ports could have on neighborhoods if not properly managed. So following that, last month, the Planning Commission conducted a study session to review the proposed ordinance. This similar overview was presented at that time, and the Commission provided comments on the proposed amendment. There are questions about the number of stalls allowed and whether this would be limited at all by the proposed amendment. The answer to that is no. It would simply be limited by the standards within the amendment in terms of setback, parking, outdoor dining space, all of those sorts of things. Some questions about definitions and looking for clarity on that, and the organization of the proposed amendment. Staff reviewed and made changes where appropriate. We removed outdoor lighting, trash, and waste collection standards from the amendment since those are located elsewhere within the UDC. And we didn't want a redundancy or to tie those two things together. However, we did change it so that we pointed in the introduction of that section to the fact that these are mentioned elsewhere in the UDC, just to improve the readability of the amendment and make sure that people realize that those were still in effect. They are just located elsewhere. We also separated out some sections, including hours of operation and generator usage. We looked into some other things, such as whether coffee shops would be included in the definition and found that there is other language elsewhere that included coffee shops or beverage dispensary. So no changes were made there, but just generally went through all of the comments and either addressed them or in some cases where it wasn't necessary, we're just able to confirm that. So this is what we ended up with, was the proposed food truck ordinance or the food court ordinance, which addresses food trucks. So I'm using that term interchangeably, and I apologize for the confusion. But when I say food court, I'm specifically mentioning the definition in the ordinance, which includes food trucks. So the food court is a unified establishment which serves food for consumption on or off premises for multiple eateries or vendors. Food courts may be developed to include a combination of indoor or outdoor operations. So the proposed amendment allows for this new land use class of the food court in commercial zones. So we're, again, allowing a use that's emerging that wasn't previously permitted. Key standards are outdoor activities are allowed. Loudspeakers and music are prohibited within six hundred feet of residentially zoned property, which is consistent with restaurants within the UDC. Retail sales are permitted, but not to exceed fifty percent of vendor stalls. There must be permanent power pedestals and a central grease interceptor for the food court. We also noted that commercial kitchens or commissaries for vendors onsite are permitted. Outdoor internal combustion generators are prohibited. So an inverter generator, which doesn't have the noise or the fumes, would be permitted under this standard, but the internal combustion would not. Hours of operation for the new land use class are limited to seven AM to ten PM. Restaurants are required. Those can be permanent or temporary as long as they are accessible. And one parking space per vendor is required, plus one per one hundred square feet of designated outdoor seating area. That one to one hundred number is also consistent with what we have for restaurants in the UDC. Also, we noted that a dustproof surface may be permitted as exceptions to the standard requirement. We go into some language about what would potentially constitute those. It was also noting that additional landscaping is not required within an existing developed site, and we talk a little bit about what that actually means, or actually it's pre-developed site is what it moved forward to. And if pavement, if permanent pavement is not provided, landscaping and stormwater retention and detention standards do not apply. So based on this revised UDC Code Amendment, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve a motion to recommend the adoption of the Food Court Code Amendment to the City of Tucson Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. I'll open this up now for any clarifying questions from the Commission of Staff related to the information presented. Commissioner Martin.
Thank you. Thank you, Carver. One thing I think I brought up last meeting was beverages isn't included in the food court definition. When right below it, it is included in the restaurant definition. It just seems like there's people that serve coffee and tea that are, you know, beverage.
So definitely Commissioner Martin, so under section one point three, point four, point N of the UDC, food service is defined, the definition of food service includes coffee shops. So we believe that that circles back and then includes beverages in the definition.
I just didn't understand why restaurant number two includes beverages, but food court's don't, so.
Duly noted.
The second one is, whenever you read it, it seems like indoor food courts, like in malls, would be covered under this. I don't, I don't see what separates them from.
Can you repeat yourself, Commissioner Martin? You broke up on that.
The indoor food courts, like in malls, would fall under this, these rules and definitions? I don't, I didn't see anything that would differentiate them from, it says indoor and outdoor.
So a mall would be a different use as a commercial retail establishment versus a food court and would be addressed elsewhere in the UDC.
Okay. The third thing is under C one and NC. It says it has to comply with nine point seven four M point five, which is only addresses restaurants under five. Seems like food court should be added to the, that five. Well, first of all, it doesn't seem like, you know, it talks about serving alcoholic beverages. I didn't know that food trucks could do that, but this seems for consistency that if you're gonna make it a used, specific use standard, that five should include food trucks in the, along with restaurants.
I will take a look at that one. Don't have that on my list of things that we previously looked at.
Because most of the other zones don't have five through seven. It's just six and seven, so. I wasn't sure why five was there to begin with, and then when you go to five, it doesn't have food court in the text, so. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. We'll take that input into account when we move this forward.
Commissioner Kenny.
Yeah, thank you, Karen Cassidy, and thank you, Carver, for the presentation. I just kind of wanted to get an idea, maybe from staff, if you have an idea of what the demand for something like this is. I'm kind of aware of maybe one or two potential uses, potential users for this kind of a development. Is there a lot of demand for this kind of thing, or are we making this for like one, one development?
So right now, I'm aware of five different inquiries, some of them further along than other for this type of development. And generally, when we start to see two or three, we start to look at, you know, is there something that really needs to be done here? So we've received in the two, two and a half years, or two or so years, almost two years that I've been with the city, I'm aware of five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the Commission before we open the public hearing? Okay, I'm not seeing any more hands up, so at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing to members of the public who'd like to speak about this item to the Commission. In general, there's a three to five minute time limit per speaker, which may be extended at the discretion of the Chair. Members of the Commission may ask questions of the speakers, but we do ask that each speaker be timely as we want to make sure that those who would like to speak have an opportunity. We haven't had anybody request to speak ahead of time. If there's anybody in the meeting who'd like to speak related to this amendment, please let us know now. You can either raise your hand or if you don't know how to raise your hand, go ahead and unmute yourself and just speak up. I'm not seeing any hands going up, and I'm not seeing anyone unmuting themselves. All right, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The public hearing is closed. I'll open this up to general discussion by the Commission of the Proposed Code Amendment.
More of a procedural kind of question, I suppose. Carver mentioned he's going to look into the, the use specific standards that Chuck mentioned. If that does require some changes, does that make a motion to recommend moot? Does this need to come back, or can we still recommend it with that change, I suppose, if it's necessary?
Ian, would you be okay?
I'm sure, yeah. You could, you could do it a couple of different ways. One, you could recommend that we just take a look at that and have it as part of the recommendation. Actually, I, we have counsel here who can probably address it better than I, if, period, if you don't mind doing so. Yeah, so anyways, you, you could potentially, I think Period's having trouble muting herself, unmuting herself. Yeah, you could potentially make a recommendation and have us review just that portion, you know, prior to Mayor and Council having it a part of your recommendation.
Okay.
I'll make the motion. So I click the motion to recommend the adoption of the Food Court Code Amendments to the city. Let's see, I've covered it up with my city Tucson Mayor and Council. Let's see, additional recommended, recommendation that staff look into the definition of food courts, but I don't know, the language to make it consistent.
Is there a second?
All second.
All those in favor of recommending this item to Mayor and Council, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. That motion passes unanimously. A favorable recommendation of the Food Court Unified Development Amendment from the Planning Commission will be sent to the Mayor and Council. Would staff please provide the presentation for item number four, Plan Tucson Update?
Great. Hi, everybody. Thank you so much. Hello, Commissioners. We have prepared a short informational update for you on the City of Tucson's general plan called Plan Tucson. I'll introduce myself. My name is Amanda Smith. I am the interim project manager. Along with Ian Wan, also on the call, and Jessica Danasek are the core team of staff working on Plan Tucson. We also have support from several consulting companies, Gordleak Group, Southwest Decision Resources, and the Planning Center as we work on this update. We have prepared a update primarily on the outcomes of Phase One, as well as a summary of our working group process. And I want to just acknowledge that this is an update and not a rewrite because so much of Plan Tucson two thousand thirteen and so many of these other planning efforts along the city are still relevant. And wanting to take a moment to appreciate the Commissioners and others on the call who had a hand in these other planning projects. They are a rich foundation for our work. A brief summary of our roadmap as we move forward with this update process. We're currently in the middle of Phase Two, Define and Plan for the Future, where we are working with community to draft community-wide goals, policies, and future growth scenarios. The outcomes of Phase Two will be a preliminary draft of Plan Tucson. And then we'll be moving into Phase Three, which will be refining that draft and bringing it back to you all for a public hearing, as well as a public hearing with Mayor and Council, leading to Plan Tucson adoption. And then finally, Phase Four is sharing Plan Tucson with the public and preparing for a general election. I'm going to pass it over to Ian Wan, who's going to bring us back to Phase One. We wanted to share with you all the results of all of the community engagement that occurred during the community listening and discovery phase.
Yeah, thanks, Amanda. And thank you, Commissioners, for being with us today. Again, my name is Ian Wan. Maybe the next slide. We're gonna first review the shared values expressed in two thousand thirteen, followed by recent community trends expressed in Plan Tucson's Phase One Community Outreach. The list right here are the two thousand thirteen community values and visions. They consist of good jobs, strong economy, a clean and safe built environment, protected natural environment, a healthy population, cohesive and attractive neighborhoods, access to multiple forms of transportation, a vibrant and diverse cultural life, a sustainable development pattern, a distinctive character for both Tucson and for the region, as well as efficient, effective, and transparent government. Next slide. Phase One Numbers. Plan Tucson kicked off Phase One Community Listening and Discovery in January with an open house at the Tucson Convention Center. Through May, engagements in the community consisted of in-person community workshops, virtual workshops, community meetings with partners and organizations, an online survey, and an intercept survey, as well as attending pop-up events sponsored by community organizations. During the first phase of community outreach, Tucson residents were asked to share their priorities and vision for the future of our city. This was an opportunity for the community to learn about cities' recent efforts, assess our challenges and needs, and guide Tucson's long-term decision, direction. Community members were asked to respond to the following questions throughout the engagement. They consisted of, what do you like about Tucson? What are you concerned about Tucson? And what ideas, changes do you have? During Phase One, the Plan Tucson website received over fourteen thousand views, engaged over two thousand residents, had nine hundred and fifty online survey participants, four hundred intercept survey participants, and over thirteen thousand comments received. Percentage of comments by working group topics is represented in the table to the right. As you can see, the community resources did receive the most comments with twenty-seven percent. Next slide. Phase One Engagements. The Plan Tucson team conducted outreach, again, at various locations around Tucson to include parks, community centers, as well as other pop-up events and workshops, both in person and virtually. Initially, the team convened four workshops in person and two virtual workshops, and really relied on other community organizations to help co-convene the other engagements that you see here. Ward one, Ward six, had more engagements than the other wards, and this was mainly due to the locations of the University of Arizona and the Tucson Convention Center, where multiple events were held. Participants, participant tracking was utilized through the online survey, as well as the map that we utilized at events. Mapping activities were voluntary and does not reflect everyone engaged within Phase One, but is a good representation. It's also good to note that nearby municipalities engaged in Phase One, but only Tucson residents get to vote on the plan. From comments received, five thematic working groups were established, and they'll continue to the conversation through Phase Two. The five thematic working groups are the Land Use Housing Development Design, Water Climate Action Green Space, Transportation Mobility Access, Community Resources, as well as Economic Vitality. Next slide. Now we'll dive into the community trends from all the comments received throughout the different engagements, specifically to the thematic groups. So as you can see, the Economic Vitality Working Group received fourteen percent of all comments. Of that, fifty-eight percent of the comments expressed what people liked. People liked arts and culture, specifically food and murals, local businesses, variety in businesses, providing unique character, restaurants and art, friendly to startup companies, festivals and events, as well as farmers markets. Twenty-two percent of the Economic Vitality comments expressed concerns, concerns consisted of limited job opportunities, short-term rental impacts on housing and commercial availability, wages being less than the cost of living, too much regulation preventing business development, vacant big-box stores, centers, as well as unqualified workforce. Twenty percent of the Economic Vitality comments were ideas for changes. Ideas include increased programs and incentives to retain employers and employees, equal distribution of art throughout all, sorry, equal distribution of art throughout all areas of Tucson, increased entertainment, live music and sport venues, increased local business development and support, increase improved job training, education, and neighborhood-scale green space business entertainment. Community Resources. The Community Resources was the working group that did receive the most, at twenty-seven percent. From that twenty-two percent of comments, related to comments that things people liked. People enjoy parks, specifically pools, courts, and classes, friendly and open to all, big-city amenities, museums, concerts, and gyms, government-sponsored engagements, and city ward structure, local culture, embracing diversity, as well as safety. Fifty-eight percent of the Community Resource comments expressed areas of concerns. Concerns consisted of unsheltered population, unsafe public spaces, crime, access to a local newspaper, as well as inequitable distribution of resources amongst city programs. Twenty percent of the comments with, in Community Resources, were suggestions for ideas of changes. Ideas consist of Ideas consist of additional and improved recreation spaces for adapting to heat, increased locations for cooling centers and splash pads, provide additional support and services for those in need, provide more community updates on current projects and programs utilizing data, increase partnerships with all types of community groups and organizations, diversify funding for social programs, and ending with improved schools, educational opportunities, and compensation for educators. Water Climate Action and Green Space received twenty-one percent of all comments. Of that twenty-one percent, fifty percent of comments were related to what people liked. The likes include natural beauty, mountains, sunsets, native plants, and weather, the city's dedication to climate action and water conservation, encouraging conservation measures with rebates and programs, open space and land, stormwater infrastructure, as well as the plastics programs. Thirty percent of Water Climate Action and Green Space's comments were concerns. Concerns consisted of water availability and access to it, heat, energy costs, growth and development, utilizing too much water and resources, maintenance of existing tree inventory, light pollution, as well as pollution and litter. Twenty percent of the comments related to water, climate action, and green space were ideas for changes. Ideas consist of increased current environmental programs, green stormwater infrastructure, rainwater harvesting, compost, and plastics and glass recycling, more neighborhood cleanups, incentives reducing carbon, environmental footprint, solar to support mini-grids, require sustainability aspects and new developments, and the removal of grass. Land Use Housing Neighborhoods and Design received eighteen percent of all comments. Of that eighteen percent, twenty-nine percent of the comments were related to what people liked. Likes include zoning, encouraging development along key transportation routes, diversity of housing, neighborhoods, and development, innovative approaches, innovative approaches to housing affordability, historic preservation and adaptive reuse, the small-town feel, walkable downtown, and friendly neighborhoods and community. Thirty-seven percent of the comments within Land Use Housing and Neighborhoods Design Working Group expressed areas of concerns. Concerns consisted of urban sprawl, housing affordability costs, neighborhood plan, zoning restrictions and code updates, gentrification, housing accessibility, specifically ADA market rate, affordable in student housing, increasing population needs, increasing land, water, energy uses, and overall growth of becoming a big city, and ending with increased urban feed island. Thirty-four percent of Land Use Housing Neighborhood Design comments were ideas for changes. Ideas consisted of converting underused parking lots for adaptive reuse, expansion of downtown, mixed-use infill development, increased density, preserve more open space, build zone for legislate affordable housing, convert empty buildings into commercial centers, and increase local food production. I believe this is our last one. Transportation Mobility and Access received twenty percent of all comments. Of that twenty percent, twenty-five of the comments expressed what people like. People enjoy the fare-free transit, bike infrastructure, specifically the Loop and Bike Boulevards, public transit, the streetcar, low-traffic volume, and access to nature. Thirty percent of the comments within Transportation Mobility and Access were related to concerns. Concerns consisted of road widening projects, lack of road safety for all, lack of shade at bus stops or bike pedestrian paths, car-centric investments and development, bus frequency, reliability and safety, road quality, potholes, and traffic congestion and road noise. Forty-five percent of all Transportation Mobility and Access comments were ideas for changes. Changes and ideas include improved bike and pedestrian infrastructure, protected bike lanes with shade, expand streetcar, improve public transit, bus rapid transit, better road maintenance, fix potholes, road diets and smart traffic signals, increase connections to open space and nature, and create no-car zones in commercial corridors. This information is on the website. We've got it under the Phase One tab at the top. You can download and kind of really kind of dive a little bit deeper into the report. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Ian. Yeah, an incredible amount of outreach and synthesis went into developing that report. I do recommend everyone take a look. I have just a couple more slides to give you a sense of where we're going with the project. This slide includes a diagram that outlines the first half of our Phase Two outreach, acknowledging all of the work we just covered on the left. We have our five working groups. We just finished our kickoffs, which included some visioning. And this morning was our second out of five working group discussion on the goals of Plan Tucson. Then we'll be moving into community forums. I'm going to skip ahead for a moment. We added community forums to the mix for our Phase Two outreach in response to feedback from the community that they, a lot of, well, the working groups meet during nine to five and their two hours, and we meet like semi-regularly. And folks wanted additional opportunities to get involved while we're shaping the goals and policies. And so we're offering community forums after we, after the working groups get through goals. And then we'll be having another one after working groups get through policies. And people who attend community forums will be able to give feedback on the same content. There's a virtual option on Thursday, November thirtieth, from five-thirty to seven, as well as an in-person option on Saturday morning, December second, from ten to twelve. And that'll be at the Fred Archer Center on the west side. And so if you know anyone who would be interested, please help us spread the word for this like alternative to the working groups. I'll just back up one minute. So after we have our community forum on goals and policies, on visions and goals, working groups will be reconvening to discuss policy. We'll be having a in-person cross-cutting topics meeting where everybody from all five working groups will be invited to come together and review the topics that we've noticed have overlap across all five groups. And that includes public participation, equitable community, climate change. And then this is also when working group participants will have an opportunity to look at the future growth scenarios, if all goes according to plan. As I mentioned, we'll have another round of community forums at that time before moving into much more broad outreach in the community on the second half of Phase Two, which will look a lot like online surveys, attending like pop-up events, hosting more workshops, and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to acknowledge the five working groups again. We do have Commissioner Lane and Commissioner McCandie confirmed as the liaisons from the Planning Commission who are attending the land use group, but I also know several others from the commission have been attending. And we're so thankful for your time and energy. I invite anyone who has questions or if you've been participating and you have something to share for the benefit of the group or if you have questions for us. That's all we have prepared. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Amanda and Ian. I appreciate you guys giving this. And for the Planning Commission, we just wanted to give you this update. Because as Amanda went through on the timeline, this is ultimately going to come to the Planning Commission probably later next year or early twenty-twenty-five. So Planning Commission will be taking public testimony on the, the update to the general plan. So we want to keep you informed and do these updates. You know, every few months, kind of when we're at key milestones in the project. So you are aware of what we're hearing from the community and where we're at with the project.
Thanks, Karen.
Great. Thank you, staff. I see we have a couple hands up on the commission for questions or comments. We'll start with Commissioner Ortiz Pino.
Yeah, hi, thank you. Appreciate all you guys' work. It was a great presentation and a great discussion that we had today. And I just wanted to know today if, you know, per, I recall that there was a requirement to reach out to the different jurisdictions and other I don't know what you want to call them, organizations out there that have impacts on the planning side of things. If you guys had today gone and reached out to, say, TEP or PAG or these other organizations for input and comment directly on the goals that may affect the wider community like that.
Thanks, Commissioner. Yes, we have started reaching out and doing that process. We've been able to meet with Davis Monthem Air Force Base and then have been running into some scheduling challenges with the others. So we do intend to reach out for more focused conversation, especially from like a land use perspective. And then if any of those entities want to have additional one-on-one conversation about other areas of content like the goals and policies, we welcome that as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Abreza?
Hi, yes, thank you for the presentation. I know I've, I've been out of town for quite a while. So I have one question, this slide that you had as far as showing that you're, you're basically planned to reach out, do a community forum as far as inviting folks to come during the planning phase. And it was really clicked up there. And you said, spread the word. Is it actually posted on any city website or is it at Plan Tucson? If I search Plan Tucson at this, at the city website, would I immediately find that you have these? That it's actually open? There it is. Thank you. Is it, is it located somewhere and, or easily found? And then if I search Plan Tucson, would I say, would it have these virtual on Zoom meetings like the community forum?
Thanks for that question. I'll pass it over to Ian to answer that, who's been coordinating the community forums primarily.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner. I missed the last part of your question. If you can repeat it, please.
Well, yeah, as far as the community forum, as far as vision and goals, the community wanted more, have more input during the planning phase. So, and so you set up these things. Is, where would one find this on the city of Tucson website? Would you go to Plan Tucson and this is posted there? Or would it be a search and find type thing? Is it, is it easy to access by a normal person?
Yeah, we've got the planttucson.tucsonaz.gov website that we've been utilizing since January of last, of this year, actually, since the start of it to post those community forums. They're currently on there under the Phase Two tab.
Okay.
And then we'll be sending out newsletter, newsletters through GovDelivery as well as communications out to the general public to inform them of these community events. Social media posts as well will be going out as well as, I believe, a press release for it. So, yeah, outreach will be put it out there as well as it already being on the public facing website for Plan Tucson.
Okay, well, you said spread the word. And I basically, it's spreading the word is sending someone to the website. Then they can actually see the full presentation. So.
Correct. Yeah, and all the registration links are there and some directions and additional information.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for staff from the commission?
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I'm curious to know if you can expound on water conservation ideas and initiatives. If I caught it correctly, you mentioned that there are rebates and programs. But rebates on what and programs to do what exactly? And grass removal, in what areas and what will be put in its place?
Yes, thank you for that question. The rebate's question is outside of my area of expertise. If you want detailed answers to that, I would recommend that you look into Tucson Water, their conservation program. And as far as the grass removal, I know Ian Wan and Dan Bersik worked on some code, code related to that. So I'll let them answer that question.
Sure, Commissioner Pafford. Yeah, I think those were, those may have been kind of comments related to kind of feedback that we received as far as things that people want to see and things that are so rebates and, and grass removal. Just to let you know kind of an update on grass removal, because the Planning Commission was the reviewing body for that. That was, we did do a turf ban for, for ornamental turf that was adopted by mayor and council back in the spring. So that is now in effect. So we do have that for new development. And I believe that Tucson Water is currently working on ways to incentivize the removal of ornamental grass on the existing development. You'll see a lot of kind of development from the seventies and eighties that has that, those kind of landscape borders that is grass that's not really providing much of a benefit to anybody. But it costs money in order to, to basically, basically create a desert landscape instead of the, the kind of traditional lawn. So they're working on a program, Tucson Water, to, to transition that.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Would staff please provide any PDSD updates to the commission?
Hey, commission, a couple updates. I think we mentioned last month that we're doing a design competition for accessory dwelling units or casitas. We got overwhelming response, over sixty submissions from designers, not just in Tucson, but across the state and even international designers. So there's actually a component of that that is going to be, that is a public vote. So you can go online and look at all the submissions and make your own selections for what you think would be great casitas to add to our housing stock in Tucson. We also have a jury who will be reviewing these designs based on the design criteria. And then we will be announcing the selected designs in mid-November. So we can share a link for that public vote. Again, please feel free to share that through any of your networks so that people can take a look at all the great submissions and share their inputs. I also want to mention that we're doing outreach for the Grant Road overlay. I'll ask Carver to give a brief update on that. And then the last thing is that we are, we mentioned this last month, that we're looking at options for hybrid and in-person meetings. And do want to let you know that the city, the mayor and council adopted new rules last night for hybrid meetings. So we're going to be considering our options and we will be looking to start holding Planning Commission public hearings with some in-person component. We're looking at how to do that. But we want to ensure that when we're holding public hearings of the Planning Commission, they are accessible in multiple formats. So we're going to be looking at those options and we'll probably be in touch with you about what those might be. We don't have any public hearings scheduled in the near future, but that's something that we'll be looking at. Carver, do you want to share the dates for the Grant Road?
Certainly. There will be two kickoff meetings that will be held, one in person and one virtually for the Grant Road overlay. The in-person meeting is taking place this evening, excuse me, on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth in the evening at the Boys and Girls Club at Grant Road and Country Club. And that is set to begin at five-thirty. And then the virtual meeting will be taking place on Thursday, the twenty-sixth, where we will be covering similar, similar materials, but using a slightly different process due to the virtual nature of the engagement.
And those are our announcements. Thank you. Sure, good see.
All right, moving on to the next agenda item. Would staff please provide the commission with a preview of the upcoming future agenda items? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Abreza has a question. Go ahead.
I got my hand up a little bit too slowly. Oh, as far as, I was kind of excited to hear about the plans for the, the casitas and everybody putting in their plans. the casitas and everybody putting in their plans. Now, maybe I read this wrong, but is it true that the, these are going to be plans that are adopted by the city that say somebody wants to put a casita in their backyard, they can actually purchase the plans, and the plans have actually already been approved, providing the site inspection has already been done? Is, is that the whole plan with these, these new little casitas? Did I read that? Did I read that right?
Yes, and sorry for not explaining that further when I mentioned the design competition, but that is the goal, is that the ten selected designs, we hope to basically create a model plan library. And the plans that we select will be eligible for plan review by the city. So we will conduct a plan review so that the building plans are pre-reviewed and basically, you know, can be permitted. They still will need to go through a site review, as you mentioned, Abreza, so we'll still need to look at zoning and things like that on a site, but the building plans themselves would be pre-approved. So that really will cut down on the permitting time. That's the goal, and reduce some of the cost when someone wants to build a casita.
Right, thank you.
Good question. So now we'll move on to agenda item number six, future agenda items. Staff?
Yes, no, thank you, commission. So as of now, we don't have any, any planned items coming to the commission, so I, we do have the Ringtown Southeast Subregional Plan, which will eventually be here, but it's still working on the finalization of that before it comes to the commission. So nothing, nothing quite yet, but we will definitely keep you informed on Plan Tucson items, kind of our plan for public hearings and public and in-person meetings, as well as that Ringtown Southeast Subregional Plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Agenda item number seven is the call to the audience. At this time, I'd like to offer the public an opportunity to speak on any subject that is not listed on the current agenda as a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand or speak up now to let us know. I'm not seeing any hands going up. I'm not hearing any voices. Last chance for a call to the audience. Anyone wants to speak? All right. Seeing no hands and hearing no voices, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, adjournment. Can I please have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Members, and thank you, staff. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.